All right. Good morning. I think I have 10 o'clock, 10 a.m. Welcome to another FOA ref webinar. Today we have Tom Baller, which is the coordinator of officials for the New Mexico Yaffle League here out of Albuquerque. Next week, we have Wednesday, 5:00 p.m., Dean Blandino, which is the CFO, National Coordinator of Replay. We'll be talking to us about football, so make sure you come in and listen to that 5:00 p.m., Dean Blandino. And then Thursday at 2:00 p.m., there'll be another coaches officials webinar on Dana Pappas' Zoom. And Abram Anaya, Mountain West Center Judge will be giving a class on his film evaluation breakdown that he does for the NMOA on the complaints that are sent in on plays from coaches. And he'll give a breakdown of his process and what he goes through when he looks at film. Then we'll take a three-week break and come back the week of June 15th with the Summer Rule Session. Ken?
Yeah, thanks Dennis. Good morning, everybody. You guys, you heard him talk about Dean Blandino and you're probably wondering, why are we bringing in an instant replay guy? Believe it or not, in the NFHS book, it does talk about us being able to use replay in a playoff situation if we ever could get that passed in the bylaws, but it is there. And Dean has, his resume is way beyond just replay. So I would highly suggest if you guys are interested, joining in on that podcast. And if you guys don't know, Tom, we're gonna, we're gonna allow Dana to speak and then Mel introduce him. But Tom is like a wealth of information. He's a local guy. I, you guys, please ask questions, man. I mean, you don't get Tom one-on-one like this very often. So Dana, I'll turn it over to you. Dana, are you there?
She's there, but she muted. Yeah, mute her.
We'll give her a moment.
She might say a few words right again. She says she might be a little bit late joining us. So go ahead, Mel.
We'll let her, we'll let her jump in then when she gets a minute. Mel, do you want to introduce Tom, please?
Mel's muted, too. Take him off.
Hey, Mel, try one more time, please.
Can everybody hear me?
There you go, Mel. Yes.
All right. Good morning, everybody. It's my privilege to introduce our next guest, Mr. Tom Baller, who I've had the privilege of knowing for the last 10 years. If you take a look at his resume there to the left. He was an official for high school for 13 years. Four state championships. He also he was hired and a referee to Division Two playoff games. He also served in the Mountain West Conference, a side judge and a field judge from 2003 to 2007. He was also in the Big 12, a field judge in 2008. And two bowl games, 2004, the Houston Bowl, and 2008, the Outback Bowl. Tom is currently the present coordinator of officials for the New Mexico Young American Football League. Tom, also, I will tell you this, he's, he's a book of knowledge. If you ever got anything to ask, please reach out to Tom. Tom?
Well, I appreciate it. All right. Well, thanks, Mel. There for a second, Dana and Mel, you can hear. I said, man, I already put two people asleep and I hadn't even started talking. It's kind of harsh. I appreciate the invitation. What I thought I would do, I'll give a little bit of background on this is, is I stopped the fish shit in 2008 just because of the schedule and I had young kids that were grown up. And I sat back and it was just way too much time and I was missing way too much of my kid's life. Life. So I decided, you know, I had a pretty good run. I have two boys and then a girl, so they were all athletic and played. And then my son played, my son, he graduated a couple of years ago, played high school football. And being a parent in the stands, it was kind of interesting to watch high school football. And what's happening in high school football? And how do you officiate modern-day high school football? With five guys. And then when my son graduated, I got a call from Bill Blair, who's a Yaffle Executive Director of Yaffle, asking if I could help out with officials. They had a couple incidents that happened. And I had some theories on how maybe you could do some things. So I said, well, let's go give it a shot. So one of the things I did is I made sure that Mel and Felix Solis was involved. So there are the signers and they helped us. And we'll talk a little about what we're doing in Yaffle. But what I'm going to talk about is kind of some stuff I learned at the Division One level that I did not know in high school, that I wish I did. And how to translate it to modern-day football. So I don't, let me see if I can, how it's going to work. You may have to help me, Ken and Dennis. But can you guys see my screen? Do I need to share it again?
You need to share it again.
Yeah. All right, give me a second. I shouldn't tell you this. I'm actually an IT guy at Sandia Labs and I should be able to do this a lot better than I do. Don't tell my boss.
So down here, there you go.
There you go. You gotta hit about nine different buttons, right?
Yeah.
So you know, some of this stuff might be a little different, mine it kind of be old. I've tried to stay updated in the mechanics manual and some of the mechanics manual I disagree with because when I did it, I had, it worked better for me differently. I've tried to go back, especially when I'm back now with the Yaffle officials of going back and learning the mechanics. And, and I gotta learn the rules again. High school rules are interesting. So modern-day high school football, guys, everything now is the spread, right? The old days of the Delaware T are gone. So with spread, you have, why, you have at least, you know, four guys in patterns. You got running backs. You got a quarterback who's running. You got, to me, the biggest nightmare in the world for an umpire is RPOs. To me, that's the biggest cheap play there is. I remember, you guys remember when John Gruden used to have that quarterback show on ESPN? He had one of the Ohio State quarterbacks on. And just to give you a back, I'm not a big Ohio State fan. My son's a Michigan grad, so I'm not going to talk good about Ohio State. If Cory's on, sorry. But they show how they work the RPO and the play they showed worked perfectly for a touchdown. But they don't show that guard jacking the linebacker as that wideout catching that slant right underneath them. Now, if I can go jack somebody who is defending a receiver before the ball gets there beyond the line, I could probably even call pretty successful plays, right? You know, going back to the spread, there are so many holes, even with seven men. I don't know how you do it with five guys. I mean, it's just, there's holes everywhere. And it's not because you guys aren't good officials, it's because of the nature of the game. On my son's team, they had a defensive end who was pretty dominant. He was fast, he was big, and at the high school level, he probably was the best defensive player in the state. But when you would watch film, you could see the holes and the grasp that he would have to fight through. But then you'd see the receivers downfield getting held too. And that's when you go, I don't know how you get all this stuff, guys. I mean, how, if seven guys struggle with it, how are five? And how do you, you know, going back to how do you manage the holes that existed? You know, like you said, you got receivers in back. One thing to learn, and this was always fun, try and keep up with what's coming in the game, what's the big thing in the game is. You can kind of do that a little bit. I would always read like SI online and they would have, you know, articles about, about how offenses are doing things, how defenses are doing things. You learn about tackling. To me, what's interesting is the last four or five years, how rugby tackling has come in. And if you guys don't know much about rugby tackling, go watch a YouTube video that Pete Carroll did. And what's interesting about the rugby is where the helmet goes. And I know there's a big emphasis on helmet contact, but when you rugby tackle, you gotta hit with your shoulders, means you gotta duck your head, right? So you gotta be careful of, of that. And you gotta make sure that the head, you know, slides to the side. But the rugby seems to have more of the head down than heads up. Those are just a couple of things. We can go more into what's coming on. So here's my ideas, right? Officiate what's important. If, if it's not important, we can't worry about it. The football is never foul. Don't watch the football. And when you watch a lot of officials, you see their hat and they're watching, and they're watching the ball and they're missing action downfield. Spot doesn't move, don't officiate the spot. Once you get the spot, get your head up. Get your head on a swivel. Here's what I'd like to say, don't move to the next down too soon. What happens is, is a runner will be down and there's a pileup and guys are looking back to see if it's their first down or they're given the down signal and they're looking for the referee or the umpire. They're trying to get the ball too soon. To me, that down never ever ends until players separate. I don't do anything with the down with, with the play that ended. Except maybe stop a clock if I have to. But even then, until the down, until players separate, then I move on and then I'll come up with the down and start looking at the clocks and doing stuff like that. Does that make sense? So don't ever let opponents be next to each other or alongside each other without, without you watching or being involved. Keys, the keys are everything. You know, when I got to D1, we would, we would show, we would get these training videos. You never wanted to make a training video, but everyone did, right? And there were plays that would happen that guys would get ripped for, and I would just be sweating going, I don't know how you officiate that, right? But then what you learn is keys are everything. If you follow your keys, you're going to be okay. When you don't follow your keys, when you're not aware of your keys is when bad things happen, right? So you gotta know your keys. You have to own your keys. And this is interesting, what I see too. I'm not saying, you know, the whole thing about don't fish in my pond and only call your, what you see, you know, what your area is. I don't agree with that. And you can't do that. But if I'm watching my key and somebody else calls a foul that involves my key, if I don't agree with that, I'm going to go have a discussion, right? And I'm not going to have an argument. It's going to be really quick. And what we used to do in the Mountain West, I worked with a couple of guys, I worked with Terry, a guy named Perry White as a back judge for like four of the six years I worked. And it would be like really quick, hey, what did you see? Okay. And to me, if something was called with my key, whoever owned that key would have to kind of approve of the call. And don't get in arguments and stuff, but you know, a back judge can see stuff on, on a wide receiver that a line of scrimmage guy can't because of angles, right? But that back judge, if it's not his key, he's going to get to that play late. He's not going to see as much action as I am if I'm watching my key all the way through. So that means that I probably can see stuff he didn't. Sarah talked about this, right? Focus on your key until they can no longer get you in trouble. So if my key is on the right side and the play goes to the left, is that, can my key get me in trouble? Probably not. We go back to officiate what is important, right? Don't officiate backside stuff or not point of attack. Understand the timing of plays and when to switch, because with five guys, you have to switch keys. This is just going to happen, right? Seven, as a, as a deep wing, I pretty much had the wide guy. And I know Sarah gave us deep guys a hard time, but we always said, you put the non-athletic guys on the line of scrimmage because deep guys run more, but I'm not going to tell her that. But you know, when are you going to switch plays? Pass patterns, right? The passes, if you have like a rhythm throw, there's a rhythm route that if the quarterback gets up, he just throws it. That's going to be shorter. If he doesn't throw it right away, as a play goes along, that receiver is probably getting deeper. Means you, the back judge probably should be backpedaling more. Same thing with, you know, with the run. The most important block would be the one by the ball, not on the outside. So who's important? Kind of goes guard, tackle, end in the progression of the play. And talk about when you switch keys. We were always talking during the game, hey, did you pick him up? Did you switch on him? We also would do stuff where you have to know if your man's being pressed. If my key was a wideout and he was being pressed, I was probably not going to change. I was going to stay with him because I had to watch to make sure he got off that press correctly. If, if my guy wasn't pressed and the back judge's guys was pressed, I knew I wasn't going to change because a back judge couldn't come off his key. But if both of our guys were not pressed, then we could do, you know, zone after first move, right? So if my key runs a post and the slot guy runs a corner, we could switch. But that's something you guys have to work and talk about. And all that, like I said, literally, all the time during plays, there were times I'd look at my back judge and we'd get a signal, we didn't have the OTOs, about did you switch and who did you have? You have to have mechanics and mechanics will give you the proper angle, right? I remember an ex-NFL replay official talking and he said, he was asked why officials miss calls and the answer is probably because of the angle, right? When you look at the angle the official sees, even on replay, they'll show an angle like, well, we can't tell. So angles are everything in our world, isn't it? And I'll talk a little bit. There's some stuff I have and remember, I was an umpire and I'm going to, I, I have a pretty strong belief in the way the umpire and referee should work, which is a little bit different than what I see a lot of people doing. Angle of bodies and shoulders. So what you want to remember, and I never really realized this for a while until I thought about it. But when you look, you're kind of looking square with your shoulders, right? If I turn my shoulders, my head turns. What I want to do is I want to keep my vision in the field, on the field. What, what I don't want to do is I don't want to turn my shoulders too fast. And you see wide guys do this. So when a receiver or somebody goes down, what they do, instead of falling with their head, they turn. Now, as soon as I turn, I can't see what's behind me. So I've narrowed my view. If you watch a, a guy on the, on TV at D1 or NFL sideline, head linesman or line judge, watch how they, kind of like basketball is, how they kind of sidestep and straddle as they square to the line of scrimmage because that gives them a better view of the field. They can see more. I can see motion if some idiots run in to jack up a guy that I can't see. So if that makes sense, and I'll show you a couple of examples of, I think, the way the referee should line up. Know your philosophies, criterias, accelerators. One of the things that we used to always learn, and this was why I asked Scott Novak this question, was at the Division One, they tell you exactly, you know, they give you the criteria to call it. And you get what we call accelerators or indicators. What's the angle of the block? If that guy's coming from 90 degrees, it can't be a block in the back, right, guys? So I'm not going to watch it or not pay much attention to it. You know, the big thing that comes is categories of fouls. Can all you guys have offensive pass interference, defensive pass interference, offensive holding categories memorized? And one thing we're asking that we're going to push the Yaffle officials is we have an issue with, you know, communication with coaches and sometimes we don't tell a coach enough. And what we want the Yaffle officials to do, and a suggestion would be for high school, you high school guys is, if there's a foul, especially a hold, I'm going to go to the coach and say, coach, that's a, he, that was a, you know, a pull and grab, coach, and that's all. But if you know the criteria, then everyone kind of can understand the criteria. Back in the day, we would kind of make up our own criteria, but know the criteria. And what we would always do is, as I said, you would get stuff and it would flow down from the NFL to Division One to Division Two, the high school. And that's what we're trying to bring back, at least for the Yaffle. So in Yaffle, we brought in Lan Clark to talk about how the NFL does head contact. And we brought in Joseph Martinez about concentration routines. Be able to describe the foul, you at least should know kind of what happened instead of he held them. Well, what did he do? Huge thing that Sarah talked about is pre-snap routines. Pre-snap routines are, are probably the second most important thing. You know, part of it is like, who was watching the clocks? So what do you do when the players separate? What's your first look? What do you do? Do you count players? Is somebody looking at the game clock? I know in Albuquerque, you, you know, you work at Milne Wilson and, you know, community and the clock operators are pretty good. But who's to say that they fall asleep and you miss something? And that comes very, very important, usually the last five minutes of the half. But who's checking that? Who's, and I'm not saying you have to sit there and watch it, but glance up and see if the clock's running or if it's not running. And so getting your routine is after the player separate, when are you going to do that? Substitution, when are you counting players? Do it the same time at the play if possible, right? Wouldn't you guys count numbers? You umpires, how many you guys count to make sure you have five guys between 79 and 50? Without it being a scrimmage kick exception? Do you guys do it? I mean, how often does it come up? And I have to be honest, in my career, I caught it once. But in my pre-snap, when the, when the offense broke, and now they don't really do it because they don't huddle or broke the huddle. But I would, I knew I had 11, but I wouldn't signal 11 until I counted five of correct numbers and then I would signal. So that was to me, every play, I have to count numbers. And then what would I do? The very last thing I'd do before the play would come up is to help me with thinking of my keys is I would tell myself, what did your key do last play? If I couldn't tell myself what my key did last play, like, oh, he went out for a pass. I knew I probably wasn't focusing on my key enough and I knew how, I knew how to kind of refocus. You know, learn body mechanics. Some of the stuff you, you all, you guys know, watch the player being hit. You know, I watched the fally, not the fouler. Watch run athletic moves. If a player's, if a player's going to go from, from facing one way and turn and run, the first thing that'll go is his shoulders, right? Shoulders go, hips go. Well, if his hips go and his shoulders don't go, then you know he was held. And a lot of times our angles, we can't see a lineman's hands. I don't know if he's being grabbed or not, but I can tell by the body mechanics. And this, this was huge, what I learned. And a lot of times when officials miss calls, there's times you get confused on body mechanics, right? As I say, that's why soccer, soccer guys dive so much because that's the way soccer referee will look at it. And it sure looks like he got fouled. Won't come to find out the guy never hit him. But look at body mechanics. Blindside blocks are interesting. And going back to body mechanics, how do you, because a rule says you can't be blocked, can't be hit on a block you don't see. Well, how do you know if a guy sees a block? I'm not in his helmet, right? But watch the body mechanics of that, of that player about to be hit. How many athletes will sit there and when they see some collision coming, won't do something? Won't do something to compete to hit. They hit. They won't drop their hips. They won't duck or something. If that player doesn't do anything to compete to hit that's coming, he didn't see it. And if it's substantial contact, be knocked to the ground probably, without, you know, contacting with the hands, you got a foul. You know, in the NFL, and I think the college talks about the angles, well, high school says he doesn't see it. I always found that's interesting. Watch the player after a hit, especially on a personal foul targeting, and even Lan talked about this. And watch how in the NFL and college, when they get stuff, how late a flag will come on a defenseless receiver. And what, what you're looking for is see if that, if that player's hit or hurt and what is he grabbing? A high school kid's not going to fake it to her. If he gets hit in the stomach, he's grabbing his head. If a kid got hit in the head, he's grabbing his head. And if he looks like he got hit in the head and you can't really tell on a safety foul, probably going to throw. So that's why a lot of times you'll see flags come a second or two later on those types of hit. And, and if you do that, I think that helps because there's some ways, some angles, I don't know how you see it, right? And it goes along with the strike zone. You know, they talk about, coaches teach about where to tackle somebody. And they teach mainly equivalent to the baseball strike zone from above the knee to below the shoulders. If I come too high on that hit, so if my hit comes up to the chest, I'm above the strike zone, where does my helmet come? My helmet has, top of my helmet will come to the jaw of the player, right? And you see that all the time. Initial contacts with the shoulder, but the hit's too high, so the crown of my helmet just jacked that guy in the jaw. And that's a hit that we can't have in this game, right? Is that in, again, if you have questions, let me know, guys. So let's talk a little bit about keys. And I'm talking about, and this obviously is not drawn to scale, okay? The way referees and, and so basically I look at it, the line of scrimmage, 71 through 70 has to be watched by the, the umpire and the referee, right? The referee, my, what was always easiest to me is my main responsibility is the quarterback. But I could look through the quarterback to the offside tackle. I think, I think the manual says to look onside. I don't like that because my main guy is quarterback and I want him being my focus. So as a referee, I always looked quarterback, oops, sorry, guys, to backside. I have no idea how to make this go backwards. So let's, we'll just talk about referee a little bit. Opposite tackle, stand throwing arm of the quarterback. You know, 12 to 15 yards, I think some of the guys get a little bit deeper now because of the, of the shotgun and nobody goes under center. Be a little wide outside normal tight end position so you can get that angle back to the tackle. And when you get that angle, turn your body a little bit. Don't look straight ahead because now I can't see that tackle. So most referees will, will actually line up at an angle, but I see a lot of high school referees who will, who look straight ahead. And then that takes away that backside tackle from you. Be athletic in your stance. You know, a lot of times they told me as a referee, never, don't bend over. I know a lot of NFL guys, Ed Hockely was a big guy who would bend over. But at least be athletic, at least be on the balls of your feet because you're going to have to move. A lot of times you'll see younger referees who will stand kind of like with one foot, you know, weight on one leg. You know, it just doesn't look athletic. If I'm not mistaken, you have the ball carry until the ball passes the line of scrimmage, right? So you're going to have to stay with him. Then you're going to have to help with your other keys. Your other officials will get blocking. And as Sarah said, if your, if your runner is not really being challenged, you can kind of come off of them a little bit. You know, on a scramble, so if a quarterback scrambling, especially if it's not, you know, a couple of seconds into the play, realize that your line guys are going to be looking downfield. And it's going to take them a couple, a second or two to realize the quarterback's coming. So you're going to have to stay with that quarterback longer. So when he gets to the line of scrimmage, you may not be able to release him. Stay with him just a little bit longer. And then, you know, we were always taught that the quarterback is the franchise. Stay with the quarterback. Quarterback goes out of bounds, I'm going out of bounds with him to bring him back. Running back, maybe not so much. I know in high school with five guys, maybe that's something you don't want to do. But realize that when a quarterback scrambles, it's still kind of the referee. Umpire, I get it. Lineup, don't ever go outside head up on the guard, you know, and coaching stuff, we call it the two technique. And there's a couple of reasons why. You know, there's a myth that you have to line up different sides because offenses will start using you as a pick. I've never believed that. I don't, I don't think that really happens. And I don't think high school coaches are that smart enough or care enough. They're going to run to what's working and not so much you. As an umpire, I didn't want to get killed. Most players are meant to run kind of, you know, off tackle or outside or even in the, maybe in the A-gap. Nothing runs up the middle. So if I was close to the middle of the formation, my odds of not getting carried off the field were a lot greater. And when you have jerk referees like Lan Clark and you would, back in the day when you had white knickers, if you got knocked down, Lan would stop the game, even if you're fine, and make sure everyone in the stadium knew you got knocked down. So you gotta be careful with jerk referees, right? And back in the day, I always carried two knickers. So if I got knocked down in the first half, I could change and get that grass stain off my knickers. So referees, don't be a jerk to the umpire.
Hey, Tom, real quick.
Yeah.
There's a question from an umpire Stan Rich in the chat room.
Yeah.
Angles are important. How do you maintain your keys and watch the point of attack on sweeps and those RPOs?
Great question. And if you give me a minute, Stan, I'll get to it. And, and I'm glad you're on, on the line, Stan. I've known Stan a long time. So you gotta read the guards, right? So the guy, the guards will tell you where the play is going for the most part. So I can, I can watch something and still be aware of movement. If I get a guard firing out, then I'm going to think, run, right? So if that guard's going second level on a linebacker, the RPO is meant to go immediately. The RPO is meant to go read, throw. And what they're saying is the ball will be out before that guard gets downfield. And a lot of times that's true, right? So if my guard fires out, I know that I better have a run. If I don't have a run, then, then I gotta think, oh, this could be a problem. The issue comes is when the RPO doesn't happen right away. Maybe the outside linebacker kind of jumps in and, and the guy running the RPO, the pattern will get hung up a little bit. So instead of the ball coming out immediately, it'll be a second or so late. So the only thing you can do is I got a guard shooting, ball's not out, ball's out, and I know that guard is downfield. And the only way I can catch this is if I know what his motion is. Now, the key too on the RPOs is that RPO is meant to come backside linebacker, right, guys? So the idea is, is, um, if that, depending on what happens with that backside linebacker, if he flows, then I'm coming in behind him. So you either have to have the center or the guard by football, we call it football physics, that it just happens to happen this way. If that center, whoever's uncovered, so if it's an odd defense, the guard's going to be uncovered. If it's even defense, that means the center's uncovered, one of those guys has to go on the backside linebacker in order for them to run the ball. So that's who you gotta watch. If it's an even, then watch the center and see what the center goes. Because the center's going to try and get back up on that outside backer. And otherwise, guys, RPOs are a nightmare, right? I don't know how you read it besides watching the movement and know in your mind whether or not that's a, that's a pass or a run. If that makes sense. And understand the timing of it. Just because that guard fires out doesn't mean he's necessarily downfield. It depends on the timing the throw comes out. And if that throw isn't immediate, then we probably have And if that throw isn't immediate, then we probably have a lineman downfield. The big thing is you want a banana. And this, and I don't know how many of you guys, uh, have been taught this, but one of the things in looking back is you, I want to be over, in between the head up on the guards. And when I read mo- when I read flow, and the easiest way to read flow as an umpire is if a lineman crosses the center, it's going that way. So if you see motion across the center, that's where the play is going. So that's where I'm gonna watch. So I'm gonna start with the guard. So I'll start with guard, watch him. And then as a play goes, I'm gonna open up. So I'm gonna take the foot that, that the play is going to, and I'm gonna back step. So I'm gonna open up. And it's kind of important that you open up and not step forward. And I'll tell you why. As I open up, that moves my shoulders and that'll put me in, in vicinity of the ball. So I can see right about where the, the, a block at the ball and the block that's coming up. But, but by doing it, I gotta turn my hips and my shoulders. Now, if I step up, what that does is that turns my shoulders back to where the ball was. So now all of a sudden I'm looking backside instead of where the ball is. Uh, I see, you know, that was a thing I had to learn is I always stepped with my left foot. So I would step up if it went right. And I noticed my angle was wrong. The way, so I would actually have to practice opening up with the right foot. A lot of guys will turn sideways. If you turn sideways, then you can't open up correctly. If it comes backside, i- if I have my left foot forward and it comes to my left, it's kind of harder, it's, it's harder to, to open up that way. So, you know, I would say keep your feet straight. And you gotta remember, you're looking primarily, you know, you, I'm gonna go center guard tackle and I'm gonna go out with it because of the way the, the timing of the play. Uh, work side out, stay even or front a ball carrier. And then I want to tell you a little bit of story. I, um, almost put on this film and I saw this on film of a, of a, of a high school game. The, 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 well, some guys will say is referee takes one side, umpires take the other side. I don't like that because the referee will have, if it comes to the referee's side, the referee has ball. The referee is not looking blocks ahead. If the umpire is backside, if he's lined up over that tackle, he can't see front side. And there was a play in a game and it actually called back a touchdown. Now, unfortunately it called back, it actually win. It, um, it called back a touchdown against my son's team. So I guess it was a good call, but it was actually an incorrect call, I thought. Because the umpire was so far wide that when the, when the quarterback rolled away from him, he can't see front side. So he calls a hold, a marginal hold on a backside as the quarterback's throwing the ball. You know? And, but it, it was done because of his mechanics. His mechanics didn't allow him to see front side and to officiate what was important and what was important as point of attack. And I don't know how you feel, but I see a lot of high school officials or umpires sliding out and, and turning sideways. And I always thought if that was the right way, why aren't NFL and college umpires doing that? I know NFL umpires, they pulled the guy behind them. And, and, you know, that's how they kind of fixed it in a way. And then you kind of have to know the line of scrimmage, right, guys? You got guys looking downfield. When a quarterback's scrambling, you kind of have to know where the line is. Uh, if you don't know, um, beanbag the spot where he threw from and come back to it. Don't worry about, oh, is he beyond or just dropped a beanbag? I'm not a big fan of dropping beanbags. Except, you know, except when there's an enforcement spot, but that could be. That's kind of umpires. Any other questions? Did I kind of explain that, Stan? I mean, you've been an umpire for a long time. Agreed. Disagree?
Hey Tom, good morning. Good stuff, man. Hector Martinez here. Question, what, what's your philosophy on, uh, you know, where the umpires should line up, uh, you know, off the, the, you know, the ball, uh, your first, when you first set it up. Uh, and then you kind of covered it a little bit, um, but on a, on a pass play or a screen play, you know, when the linemen go downfield, what's your, um, you know, what do you, the yardage that you kind of give them, uh, before you throw that flag?
Man, that's, that's tough one, right? Because what you gotta be careful of is if that ball's thrown a long way, that, that lineman could run downfield five, six yards and be okay because he left when the ball was thrown, right? My, what I always looked at is if I got confused, if that guy fired out and I read run, that means I probably was gonna throw. Cause that means the safety probably misread it. Right? Cause a lot of the things is with the lineman going downfield, not only can he block, but you're given false reads to DBs. So if I misread it and I thought it, and I'm thinking run, and then all of a sudden the ball's thrown, then I would probably go, right? And another thing on pass plays, umpires have to turn. Umpires are the only ones who have an angle from the inside out. So you have to help with, um, incomplete completions, right? And, you know, I've seen ump, umpires wipe, you know, post patterns twenty yards downfield, but they were right. I'm kind of, kind of jumping ahead. And so does that kind of answer the question? So to me, it was always if they confuse me, then I was gonna throw them.
Yeah, yeah, no, good one. Um, and just, and how about, uh, you know, when you first, uh, you know, set up, you know, you some do like nine yards, some do ten, some do seven. How, what was comfortable for you?
So I was taught, and I played linebacker through high school and then my, you know, I had high school football talent. I was really comfortable being about a yard back from the linebacker. Now linebacker can make or make your game or kill your game. Cause if a linebacker can't compete blocks and getting blown back under you or hosed, right, guys? But I was always like a yard off of them. So that way, if it was a pass, I could step forward and I could clear them easy. And if it was a run, a linebacker wouldn't step back. So I could stay out of the flow of it. So that's where I was always, and I wa- and if you watch me and even Lan would tell me, because back in the day, there was a college rule about being five yards, about what can happen five yards. I was almost always five yards. But that's close to nowadays, right? Most guys don't play that close. Another thing umpires is understand that safety has to see the ball. And if I have to move, I'll move for a safety or a defensive player. The nightmare is when they slide a safety up, it's about seven yards over the center. Now you're kind of like crap. Where do I go? But that's just kind of the way I did the umpire.
Awesome. Thank you, sir.
I'm going back real quick. Because umpires turning, we, referees, stay with the passer, period, in the story. You have, you can't watch the ball and you're never gonna, don't follow the ball. You see all these referees looking up when the ball goes, they're looking up and the quarterbacks are getting jacked, right? Or they'll get jacked in a pile. Stay there. If the quarterback's hit and it's illegal hit, kind of work your way to the pile. But you're the only person who's looking at line of scrimmage back. Stay with the quarterback. I remember when I got up to, um, D2 and, and I worked with a, um, longtime referee from Albuquerque named Terry Linton, and he was the first referee that if a pass happened, he looked at me and goes, was it complete or incomplete? It's like, Terry, how do you not know that? And then it dawned on me, he's not looking. And as a referee, the only way I knew if that pass was complete or not is by crowd noise and then I can make a guess. But too many referees are watching the football. Don't watch the football. You, once the football's thrown, let it go. Let the football go and stay on the quarterback the whole time. Does that make sense, guys? And you have to stay disciplined with that because by nature, you want to watch football. Do not watch the football. Watch the quarterback. That's the biggest mistake I see high school referees doing.
Hey Tom, can I ask a question about turning? This is Brian Proll.
Hey Brian.
How are you? I, I appreciate you spending time with us this morning. I have a question. You indicated that referees should always turn to help with, I mean, I'm sorry, umpires should always turn to help with passes and would that be every single pass? Because I always felt like if the pass flies over an umpire's head, ten yards or higher, they should still, they should continue to watch the line of scrimmage. Cause my concern is if they look every single time, then who's got the interior linemen that are chicken fighting and, and cheap shotting each other? Or, or, or is it, you know, I thought that it would buzzes, like if it buzzes your head, then you're gonna be able to turn and get an angle, but just.
So that's a good, yeah, that's, that's always been a discussion point, right? I'm a bully. If a pass immediately goes wide, maybe not. Two points to that. When the ball goes over the, over the umpire's head, there's nobody who has an angle of underneath it. So underneath the ball for the middle. So if that guy's running a post and he slides to catch it, the back judge probably can't see it because he's blocked. Line of scrimmage guys will be blocked. The only person who has that angle is an umpire. Only person. So what about the line of scrimmage guys? You know, that's kind of why the referee has to stay with the quarterback. So once my quarterback gets hit or the ball's thrown and I know the quarterback's fine, the referee can pick up the line of scrimmage guys and he's got everything backside. But if that referee's looking at the ball, he can't see that. So the referee has forgotten his keys and now I have a huge hole. So in my opinion, I was all, I always turned. Even at, even in the RMAC level, as an umpire, I turned on passes. Cause I could see stuff that nobody else could see. And that doesn't mean I'm calling pass interference. I don't think I'd ever do that because you don't see enough of the action. And I have had a, a RMAC umpire call pass interference once, but, and it was not you, Brian. So somebody you guys don't know. But, uh, that's just my opinion. The umpire has a, has, has an angle that nobody else does.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So I know we're kind of, I'm kind of being long winded and I apologize, guys. We got football and I'm kind of wound up. So hell, you know, widest player in the formation. What you have to do, if you're gonna own keys and read keys, you have to be avail- you have to learn how to read what's going on in a play by what your key does. Right? So as a deep wing, I had my wide guy. And I had to figure out, and my goal was within two steps, I had to find out if it was a pass or run. Because if it was a pass, I was backpedaling. If it ran, I wasn't. Um, the other thing is, you know, um, if he's being pressed. So a receiver who's, who's being pressed, who's gonna run a pass pattern, is gonna try and get away from him. So he's gonna make some kind of escape move, a swim move or something, right? Um, if he's not being pressed, a receiver, well, if he's gonna block a defender, will look at him. Watch your receiver's head and he'll look at the defender who he's gonna block. Or he's gonna stride, or he's gonna start chopping his feet, right? Um, if he's gonna run a pass pattern, he won't look at the defender, but he's running. And you can tell within two or three steps of, of what that wide receiver is gonna do. So that'll help you to know what's coming. Oh, you have a press key, you gotta watch the release right away. So I'd watch release. And then if I'm reading run, I'm probably going inside to help with, with, um, tackle tight end bouncing back out. Um, unpressed, um, I can help more with alignment. I can read alignment, read the tackle. When ball crosses the line, I'm probably going to, I'm, I'm gonna pick up the line or the ball carrier. Again, if you can without turning and running, watch NFL and watch, um, if there's ever a game, an NFL game, the best line guy I ever worked with, a guy named Tim Pedraza, who's forty-one in the NFL and he's on all the big games. But he does kind of the sidestep. And it's almost like how basketball officials do the sidestep instead of turning. Do, do that instead of just turning your shoulders. Stay, you know, um, if the ball goes away, you have everything on the backside. So get your head on a swivel. You got everything from, you know, end zone to end zone because everyone else has turned to the ball. So your head should be on a swivel when it goes backside. And then stay square. Uh, back judge, second receiver in, balanced formation, are you going line judge side? Some guys say they go wide side of field. Just make sure you talk about it in pregame. Know who has who, right? Back judges, to me, are the biggest ball watchers in high school football. And, you know, there was an incident in the semifinal game where, uh, a back judge key ran up on him and he was watching the football and he actually caused the safety to kind of miss an interception because he was watching the football, not watching his key. Watch your keys. Your keys will tell you what's going on. Tight ends, watch for both offensive and defensive holding. Offensive coaches get furious when, uh, their tight end gets held. Cause as they said, we've set it up, we've set it up, we've set it up. Now that, that tight end's gonna release and he gets pulled down. Um, know if your keys are being pressed. Usually your slot guy is not. Can you help out with the press on the wide guy? You know, here's your different passes formations. Um, I got like another minute. We could have talked about that. I want to talk a little bit, really quick, guys. I know I'm just blowing through stuff and I apologize. When you talk to coaches, I would disagree with what Sarah or I think Scott said. I never apologize to a coach. Um, I would say, coach, if I, if my, from my angle, it did not look like that. Um, we had somebody in the Outback Bowl on national TV tell the coach, if I missed it, I'm sorry. And all the coach heard was, I missed it? And he's like, I can't believe that guy apologized. He missed it and he wouldn't let it go. Coaches hear what they want. So I never say sorry. And I never address the coach as sir. It's not that I don't respect him, but sir is kind of a, you know, line of authority. And I don't want that coach thinking his authority is higher than I am. Uh, work ethic, I can, the story, you know, I can tell you stories about how, about how these guys, um, you know, land and, um, and Scott, Scott's rulebook, we used to give him crap that we thought he paid his kids to color in it. It was insane. Film is everything, guys. I know Dana's doing everything she can to get film. Land used to have his wife go to his high school games and film the game so I can watch it. I improved the most when I was able to get game film. Be humble. You have to be able to handle instructions and criticism. There was a Mountain West guy who was fired because he just couldn't deal with being wrong. And you, and you know, even when you're not wrong, you're wrong. Don't ever big time a game. Every game's important. Every, I don't care if it's Yaffle. In the, in, back in the day, we had a big 12 crew go to Wyoming and threw a fit about having to go to Wyoming because they thought they were a power five crew and not a mid-major and they got wrung up. You never know who's watching. Um, money can't be your motivator. There's nobody I know who's any good at officiating who did it just because of the money. So real quick about what we're doing in Yaffle. If you guys, if anyone's interested, you know, we have the coordinator, we have two assigners. The training, we're, we're trying to get information from above. That's why we're bringing in, you know, land and Joseph. Um, we stress keys and foul criteria. Film is when I get a play sent to me, I send it to land. I send it to Mickey Shorten Carrier. I send it to Felix and Mel. And I actually send it to my wife because I want my wife. I want my opinion on a mother and a lady who knows football more than most ladies. And it was a joke as I tell land that land, you're the second best official in the city. Your wife's better than you are. And then we want to get criteria why that is or isn't a foul. And with Joseph and land, they're giving us the NFL and college criteria. We're doing everything we can to, to change behavior on sidelines. We've, we've had, we've, we have a good working relationship with Yaffle. We've had parents that we've banned. We've banned a spectator for life because he followed a crew. We banned coaches. They're not allowed to go to tents. We banned coaches for that. We're doing everything we can to make this safe. We've, uh, I've pulled officials off the games because the coach came unglued. We're working with coaches to, to try and teach them what we're looking for. Because a hold for a coach isn't a hold for an official. And especially, uh, you know, illegal helmet contact or blindside block to a coach, especially a parent. It's completely different than what the rules say. Um, we, what we're striving for is we want to have more cooperation, communication with like AFOA and high school officials. We know, you know, we're, everyone's short officials. If we can get Yaffle to a position where we can go to AFOA and Dana say, hey, if you send us your younger guys, I'll be with them. I'll give them games. We can train them. And then maybe we can start sharing officials. We're not there yet. We had three new officials came last spring. One moved, one just said enough. Another guy had a parent kind of minor threaten him. And that parent was, was kicked out. That, that young official is doing high school and is a superstar and probably won't come back to Yaffle and I blame, and don't blame him. But anyway, guys, I know that's a ton. I appreciate the time. If you guys want to, ever want to talk about something, give me a call and email if you have thoughts. This is kind of theories on what I thought you'd do it. How, like I said, to officiate a high school football game in the RPO and spread era is, is, is almost impossible. And I think for the most part, you guys do a phenomenal job.
Hey Tom, do you have time for a couple of questions?
Yeah, yeah, I got all day because of, since I'm done, I gotta go mow yard. So, you know, we got five, six, seven hours.
I, I've, I've got a couple, but I'll, I'll leave it open. You guys, somebody want to jump in with a question?
Yeah, I have one. Ken, you asked enough, so let, let the umpires ask questions today.
Yeah, yeah, bring it on. I love umpires. Come on, man.
Let's see, uh, Tommy, your own post-game debriefing review with the crew, how do you offer constructive criticism to the, uh, you know, referee that always has an excuse or an alibi?
So as a crew member or as more of like an observer?
Uh, crew member, uh, your experience as a, you know, you know, as a, as a, as a upper or more most experienced official?
So there's some guys who are just aren't gonna listen, right? And do you really want to waste your time on them? I mean, and what's bad, right? And, and I know this is a bad answer. And I, you know, if you kind of say, hey, what did you see? And, you know, this is, you know, guys, and it goes back. And, you know, this is, you know, guys, and it goes back to you have to be humble and some guys just aren't humble. They're not going to admit that they made a mistake. It's, it's really hard, you know, you know, my first game, the story is, and back in the 88 when Land came to New Mexico, um, I, I had taken a year off and I was just coming back, I, year off to finish grad school. And Land and I went to Magdalena, right? And we're having a six-man game in Magdalena against Roy. And I throw a block in the back that Land doesn't agree with. And he kind of tells me why. And I remember at the moment I'm going, bull crap, I got it right. But then as you start to think is, you know what, Land was kind of right. I wasn't going to tell him that then because I knew what kind of ego he'd have. But, um, you know, pay attention to who you listen to. I've told young guys, you know, if you don't agree with a guy tells you, if a referee tells you, do it this way for that game, you kind of have to. But listen, pay attention to who you, who's telling you stuff. And as a guy who won't listen, I don't know what you do. You can try and be nice about it. You can kind of say, hey, this would have really helped the crew if you would have called it this way. You know, how, how would it be in his benefit if he would have done it differently? Is kind of how you try and couch it, I guess. But that's, that's one of those things is like, how do you tell a coach to chef? I, there is, I don't, there is no magic way to do it.
Awesome. Thank you.
I don't know if that helps and that's kind of a weenie way out, but if you know, write a book and you'll make millions.
Hey, Tom, this is Stan. Hey.
Yes, Stan.
Thanks for the presentation. I, I got down a little early, so, um, I'll be giving you a call later.
Yeah. You got my number?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hey, uh, real quick, um, how do you feel about the officials? Cause I've had referees tell me, hey, number the, the position of the ball. Some you want to use the lanyard as the, or the, uh, finger down indicator as, as position of the ball. What's your position on that?
Well, you mean how to, how to know that or, or what are you talking?
How do you get your referee to, to work with you on that? Cause I think the numbering system works a lot easier.
Oh, interesting. Well, I never really, back in the day, well, I guess a referee would, a referee was spotted. But if I had to go down and relay a ball, I'd be telling the referee where to put it. I never heard the number thing. That's like, I would always go, um, you know, side, I would, you know, I would go, um, and spacing, what is it called?
Hash.
Hash, god dang. Don't get old, guys. Hash. And then I would line up if it was, and then I would have one if it was between the hash at goalpost, goalpost middle, other goalpost halfway between and then the, the hash. And then I would tell the quarter, I would tell the referee, hey, um, this is where to put it. Or if you put it wrong, I'd go move it.
Right.
Yeah. Cause referee, as a referee, I had my, my, I had two markers, right? I used both bands. One was down and one was clock status. So I knew whether or not to wind the clock or, or to let it go on the snap before we had to stop it. So I did not, as a referee, have, um, position of the ball. So referee, unless he just has a great memory, won't know. And referees don't.
I, I had referees, I had a referee a couple of years ago and then last year too that said, hey, however you want to tell me to spot the ball, just let me know.
Pregame, just say, hey, this is what I'll tell you or something. But again, like I said, if they did it wrong, I just moved it. Who's, who's going to get in trouble? If, if, if I'm Ken Murphy and I'm up in the stands and I'm watching you and I see you spot, the ball spotted wrong, who's going to get in trouble?
The umpire.
The umpire.
Hey, thanks. Thanks again for joining, uh, doing this, Tom.
No, my privilege. Thank you.
Hey, Stan. Just a quick question for you. It's a pleasure talking to you. Um, in regards, we've always talked about communication with our officials, talking to the coaches, things such as that. But as an umpire, you suggest communicating with the players. I mean, we are right there, right in the middle of the guys.
That was the best part of it, wasn't it? That was the best part.
Yes.
Oh, kids are hilarious. You have to be a little careful with high school kids because you can't be as sarcastic. But in college, oh dear gosh, some of the stuff they would tell me and start laughing and I would go back with them. It was classic. So the things that, that, that I've learned at the high school level, and see if you agree, don't ever yell at a player. Don't yell at a player and don't be demeaning. Some, don't call him son. Hey, son, some guy's son, don't do that. Um, hey, 36, you know, every once in a while, it got to a point, I'd get kind of mad at them. But I was always talking to them. If I thought the hold was close, hey, hey, 65, watch your hands. Or even, hey, 65, that's a good block. Sometimes, be positive with them too. There's a couple of times you see maybe a lineman go flying past the pile and not jack a kid that he was going to. And it's like, 65, that's really smart way not to get yourself a foul. Nice job. But yeah, you're always talking to them, especially after the play, ball's over, ball's gone. Talk to the safety if you're in the safety's way. I've heard some umpires turn to the safety saying, no, this is where I'm standing. The safety, that player's more important than you are. Find a way to move. Does that help? But the players are hilarious. The players are so much fun, so much more fun than coaches.
I definitely agree with that. All righty, thank you. I just wanted to answer that one.
Hey, Tom. So, uh, we're running out of time.